Okay, we will call the order of the June 14th meeting of the Peters Township Council. We'll call Mr. Lawler.
This is Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigl.
Here.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Okay, rise with pleasure, leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All clear. All right, first item of business is approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting of May 24th.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention. I was the president.
No special reports. Other audience comments, Mr. Lawler.
I have two audience comments that have been emailed in. The first is from Bob Donan. One of the Peters Township favorite sons, Tom Scheit, was a resident of Bevout Road and a graduate of the Peters Township High School, who joined the U.S. Army to later become a sky soldier with the 173rd Airborne Brigade. Over six years of fighting in Vietnam, the 173rd lost over 1,500 men, including a 22-year-old from our township by the name of Tom Scheit. That's about the age most young adults graduate from college. While Tom returned home, was in a flagrant coffin. Tom was a true hero in my eyes, as well as within the strict criteria put forth by the Department of Army, who awarded him the Silver Star, the third highest award for gallantry in action and extraordinary heroism. Extraordinary heroism deserves our remembrance and recognition, and therefore, I hereby recommending that the new Loop Road in Rolling Hills Park be named Scheit Circle in his honor. Thank you for your time and careful consideration regarding this extraordinary hero from our Peters Township. As the saying goes, sacrifice is meaningless without remembrance. The second letter is from Julie Cantrell, 446 East McMurray Court. Could you please share this with during audience comments of the council meeting? I want to donate a progress pride flag for the township to fly during the rest of June. I will drop it off at the township building and hope to see it in display during June LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
Anybody in the audience for comments? Mr. Books.
Hi, Ryan Books, 855 Bevout Road. This is more of a question than it is a comment. I'm just simply interested in what the current circumstances are as far as the pool is concerned, the Aquatic Center, and what might lie in the future. Is there any thoughts on it?
What we hope to have for the next meeting of councils is a report that outlines, you know, what happened in terms of the bids in relation to the estimates and what we can do to bring those estimates back into line. And then I think there's a discussion the council needs to have as to how we proceed forward. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so unfinished business, new business, a letter of support for proposed changes to Peters Creek Sanitation Authority bylaws.
The Peters Creek Sanitary Authority has been having a problem with their meetings being fairly contentious and, I guess, maintaining civility and decorum at their meetings has been a challenge. One of the things that they're suggesting that might help is if there was a prohibition in their membership against public officials, whether they be elected or appointed, serving as representatives to the Sanitary Authority. The thought is that, and the belief is that what is happening is that rather than representing all of the authority as a whole, they have a situation where they have individuals representing simply the interests of their own municipality to the detriment of the whole. So, you know, the one thing I would point out to you is that we have, in the past, had councilmen serve on the Peters Township Sanitary Authority, as well as having the township manager serve on the Peters Township Authority.
Can I ask Mr. Lawler, though? Given the situation with Peters Creek being a multi-municipal authority versus Peters Township Sanitary being solely within the township, to me, that would make a little bit of a difference in what you described. That's one of the reasons we did it.
Yes.
I think your point's well taken, but I think it's not apples to apples.
Oh, I would agree. And again, you get back to this, that authority, because it's a joint authority, is supposed to be looking out for what the best interest is of the service area, as opposed to what's the best interest of any one of the municipalities in that service area. So it's my recommendation that Peters Township Council authorize the chairman of council to submit a letter to the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority expressing council support for the proposed amendment to the authority's bylaws.
Any motion?
Yes.
So moved. Second. You have a discussion?
I just had a question. The language in there that says, "shall not also be a public official, public employee, candidate, nominee, or relative of a public official." I mean, I would think that they would need to define that someplace, because, I mean, how far, you know, I'm your eighth cousin's first removed, or whatever. And I know in a school district setting, where I did a hearing, they had an automatic disqualification if you were a cousin, like a first cousin, and anything below that didn't bar you from serving. I don't know whether or not that term's just so open-ended that we're going to get a lot of, you know, well, you know, you're his 18th cousin, you know.
Well, is it defined anywhere in the bylaws, the term relative?
No, because this language doesn't exist.
I know, there's nowhere else anywhere.
There's nowhere else that it would, but you know what, I can really, I can.
I mean, I don't have a problem if they leave it like that, but I'm just saying, that could pose a problem.
You could have, please, that in the letter. We're all related somewhere.
Yeah.
And that suggests perhaps a median relative, or first, however you want to gauge it.
Try to keep it. If you just modify like a median, that might be.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's the intent of it.
Oh, I think that's what the intent is too, but I would agree with Mr. Curry, the way that's written. You give me on it.
All right, other than that, I have no. Motion, second. Any other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We've authorized appropriate township officials to execute a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to offset the cost of purchasing recycling equipment.
So, as a result of Mr. Joroski's efforts, the township's a recipient of a 902 municipal recycling grant. The grant is $51,996, which will be used to offset 90% of the cost of purchasing two roll-off containers for glass recycling, two roll-off containers for cardboard compacting, remote monitoring for all those containers, as well as a reimbursement for prior purchases of residential recycling containers.
Where are these containers going to be, Paul? The fire department?
These are the fire department ones. So what this is going to allow.
What size is that one? Is it going to be two of those?
It's going to be two of those. And what the advantage to us is, you're paying more because right now, truck comes out empty, it picks that up, it takes it to be recycled, and it has to bring it back out. That's where they can swap them out.
My wife said she was there the other day, and there were so many bottles, because it was full, they were just piling them up. We have to get a sign that says, can't leave glass outside of the container.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure.
Who picks that up? Public Works.
No, that's, there's a contractor that comes.
No, but does he pick up the bottles that are sitting outside the container too?
No, that's.
Who does that?
Well, it's either the Public Works Department or the fire guys are cleaning up. But we have that sign, that same thing at the cardboard compactor, and nobody's taking it back with them, so it's up to us to make sure that it gets emptied.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize.
While we're doing that, can we get a set of steps and some compliance?
With rails on the side?
So you can hold on to them when you try to carry the boxes.
Right.
At least we have steps. Before, we didn't even have steps.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to offset the cost of purchasing recycling equipment.
I'll second. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a favor, but I have one clarifying question. I asked Mr. Joroski a few things, and he answered, and to the point about the cameras, that statement about the camera is, it's actually capacity monitoring, not a camera? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So just so, you pointed that out, it's not part of it?
Next item is the approval of Sugar Brook Final Plan Number One, as shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, dated May 20th, 2021, for Kinsdale Land Partners LLC.
So this plan is a 28.6 acre parcel of land located along Sugar Camp Road opposite Shawnee Lane and Brookwood Road. It is currently under agreement. The intention is to develop it and for 33 residential lots with a mix of standard single-family homes and patio homes. The access to the development is off of Sugar Camp Road. One of the things that is included is a temporary cul-de-sac that allows for connection into that neighboring property. The, currently, there is a private drive, which is Marie, that stubs out, and then there's a parcel in between. That parcel in between, it's shown in blue, there has been attempts in the past to try to develop that property, but because of a lack of access to the back, they haven't been able to do that. So this plan would provide that access. I do think at some point in the future, it's going to make sense to interconnect that cul-de-sac the whole way over to Marie Drive to provide a second means of ingress and egress to this property. The proposed roads in this development are on a 44-foot right-of-way and with an 18-foot cartway with a 1-foot wedge curb. This is that narrower street that we're going to, you know, that specification that we're going to be changing, but they're developing it under the current regulations, which they are permitted to do. The home, oh, one of the things I wanted to show you is that the developer is giving to the township, be simple, this land located along Sugar Camp Road, the purpose of which is to provide additional right-of-way in case or when turning lanes are put in to accommodate turns on the Brookwood Road. It's something that's shown in our traffic improving capital project. One of the things that's shown on their, on their plan is a trail access off of Sugar Camp Road at the very top. I can't get it. At the very top. And currently, it also shows that as connecting across the property, they wish to give us this be simple. I'm going to suggest to you that we ought not to show an easement on this tract of land. I think it may complicate things later, if and when PennDOT does a project on Sugar Camp Road. I don't think the township has the desire to prohibit people from accessing this area up here, but having said that, I don't think you want to do it by creating some ownership interest for people outside of that plan. So, I support that connection that they show across the HOA property. I just would not do that on our own property.
Has there been any talk with PennDOT about making that a four-way stop there at that intersection?
Not yet, no. But I tell you what, I don't think you'd have a sight this, I don't think that you'd have a problem there that you would need that. The other thing that they're providing for is an interconnection back to Arrowhead Trail. So when, with this, recording of this plan, approval of this plan, you'll have this 15-foot pathway. It needs to go through an additional piece of property, and at some point in time, that's going to connect to council, but there will be connection back to the trail. The, as I said, there's two different types of houses that are being proposed. There are these patio homes, and then in the back of the plan, there are these larger homes. The patio homes are priced $500,000 plus, and the single-family homes will be $700,000 plus.
Paul, I have a question about the prior slide. Now, that bottom blue, that's a, what's that going to be?
That's a walking path to get you to Arrowhead Trail.
And is that, is that going to be, that's not ours, right?
No, it's owned by the HOA, and they would be required to maintain it.
Now, is there a reason, and maybe I'm missing something here, but the cul-de-sac is going to be called Piedmont Drive, right? And eventually, it would, the theory is it's going to connect to Marie Drive, so you're going to have a situation where the name of the street changes in the middle of.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, does anybody have a Marie Drive?
That's why, I don't know, that was my question.
I think they face, I think they face forward.
No, there's a couple lots. There's at least one that has Marie Drive. We could, we could require that this street be named Marie, if you want.
Well, I was just curious whether, you know, like if emergency services didn't have, doesn't have a problem with it, I don't, but it just seems weird, like you're going to go, eventually, you're going to go down the street in the middle, the name of the street's going to change.
We have that.
We have that in my old neighborhood. Well, yeah, my, my old neighborhood, McNary Street, like across Pleasant Avenue magically became Spring Street, you know?
We discussed it, we think it might create more confusion.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine.
I wondered if you could answer a few questions about the cluster mailboxes and the off-street parking. Prior to the meeting, I sent a few questions, and Seth Coons was kind enough to answer.
What was that?
He pointed out that the cluster mailboxes are going to be in that open space right near the entrance parcel.
Yeah, right in here.
And that there would be parking, also pull-up parking?
Yeah, six.
No, that's not shown, so.
Yeah, it is shown on the construction plans.
Okay.
There's six, six-plus off-street parking spots.
But they're only just in the beginning of the plan.
Correct.
The rest of the lots, people are most likely going to park on the street if they have an event or.
Correct.
I mean, we've had, we had this, this is one of the reasons that I object to these size of roads, because people park in their driveway, and then when people come, they're on the street, and the passage is very narrow, so. But there is nothing in the back end of it for extra parking?
There is no planned guest parking in the Piedmont cul-de-sac.
So they'll just park in the cul-de-sac?
Maybe.
We're changing that anyways.
Correct.
We're making it, we're increasing it.
We're going to look at changing the ordinance and requiring a guest parking ratio for these types of neighborhoods.
Would it be easier if you eliminated sidewalks on one side and used that other part to widen the road? I mean, I live in a plan with sidewalks on one side, and nobody seems really put out about it. Would that be a way to do?
That's a thought.
Anyway. The other question I had was the ratio of patio to full-size residential. Mr. Coons said, based on the size of the property, it has to be 25%, a minimum of 25%.
Correct.
So that's determined by the size of the lot, 10,000 square feet or less?
Yes, those are the patio home lots can be 10,000 square feet or less, and there, in this plan, there's 19 of those.
Nine.
Nineteen. There's 19 patio home lots.
That are 10,000 square feet?
Or less.
I'm sorry, he told me nine on his email, so that's why.
There's 19. He forgot the one. It's 19.
Yeah, it's all these, it's all these lots are in the front of the plan.
Okay, so even though they're more than 10,000 square feet, they're considered patio lots?
The lots in front are 10,000 square feet or less. You know what, there are a few, there are a few over the 10,000 square foot mark of those patio.
Okay, watch it. Well, that's what I was asking.
Correct.
Whether it was a square feet. There's a ratio of how still.
Correct. I don't know the answer for that.
Any idea, roughly?
Please feel free to come.
There should be a draw. I guess there's a draw.
I quite honestly, I don't, I really don't know. We've given those, I would guess they're probably 2,400 to 3,000 square feet tops. I just don't think it's that big of a footprint, so.
Does there have to be?
Yeah, I'd say 2,400, I would say it's 2,400, more I think about it, because I look at the dollar values. At about $200 a square, and we're taking a half million dollar nups, so 2,400 to 2,800 square feet. The patio would have two-car garage on the first floor, kitchen, living room, dining room, and a master bedroom suite on the first floor for us to call them patio homes. And, and then there would be a second, third bedroom up.
And then the single-family homes would be of what general size?
Probably just under 3,000 to 3,500 square feet, yes. And those would be large, Infinity is the builder, so large, high-end, single-family, usually four-bedroom type units.
Except for the one with the four-car garage, I saw that lot, and I thought, wow, it's bigger.
That may be bigger.
I've seen some of their stuff. They tend to build big things.
Yes, pretty nice, high-quality. Yes.
Thank you, Ed.
It's one of the flattest parcels in the township, correct?
It is.
Well, and so, wouldn't you think that would be less extra development cost?
It definitely reduces development costs. Earth moving is.
But still, the prices are right up there with everything else.
But, I know, I think the challenge is, again, it isn't what it costs to develop it, it's what you can afford to sell it for and have, have a product that people want. And I think they're in a price range that has been demonstrated over and over again at Peters Township, people are willing to pay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve Sugar Brook Final Plan Number One, as shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated May 20th, 2000, 2021, for Kinsale Land Partners LLC, subject to the seven pending conditions contained in Mr. Coons' report dated June 3rd, 2021.
Second. Any discussion?
Does that include the removal of the pedestrian easement?
Yes, including the removal of the pedestrian easement.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of clarity, that's removal of the pedestrian easement only within your parcel that we're doing.
Right.
We'll remove that before submitting the documents to you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. The warrant of the contract for the 2021 pavement rejuvenator program.
So as councils are aware, part of our, our normal pavement program is to apply rejuvenator on streets. There, within the budget, there was an appropriation of $125,000 allocated for the rejuvenator program. There is only one firm that provides this product. The bid that they submitted was for the same price as last year, 90 cents a square yard, which means that the total price would be $113,526, and it's my recommended addition that council award a bid for the 2021 pavement rejuvenator project.
So moved. Second. Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution amending Peters Township Personnel Manual by modifying an existing job description as well as creating a new job description.
So, we have, in the last month, month and a half, received resignations from the Assistant Parking Rec Director, from the Tennis Center Supervisor, and Recreation Program Supervisor, and none of these are, the reason for these separations with the township are all separate and distinct, and at least in the case of one of these, I'd like to talk to you about it in executive session. The other thing that we're running into is the same thing that everybody else is running into in town, is finding part-time workers. We use part-time workers at the desk in, at the rec center, we use them at the tennis center as well, and getting people interested in part-time work right now has been difficult. So what we would like to do is to slightly reorganize the parking rec department. We'd like to hire a recreation facility supervisor and make them responsible not only for the rec center, but also for the, for the tennis center, as well as the youth athletic field, so that there's somebody who's focusing on, on just these facilities. This would replace, in part, the tennis director. The tennis director, and we, we've had this arrangement now for a number of years. The, currently, the tennis center supervisor is also a teaching pro, and this was true not only when Mr. Happy was here, it was true when his predecessor was here. And that creates a problem with them in terms of paying attention to the facility versus paying attention to lessons. Lessons are far more, are far more lucrative to a teaching pro than the time spent managing the facility. So we want to do that. The other thing, we, we are back with two recreation supervisors, we've hired someone to replace that one position, and what Michelle and I would like to do is to have these three people work in these positions for a while, because quite frankly, I think the, we need to have back an Assistant Parking Rec Director, but I think that's going to come from one of these three people, as opposed to, you know, another position. So at some point in the future, we're going to come back and ask you about that. The other thing we'd like to do is to take at least one, if not two, of the positions for attendant at the desk and make those full-time positions. I think we can do that and still stay within the budget, utilizing the savings from reducing the number of part-time hours we have, as well as the savings we're going to have as a result of eliminating the position of tennis center supervisor. So that's what these job descriptions do, they enable that to happen.
Mr. Lawler, on the attendant position, and you're talking about eliminating part-timers who don't get benefits and switching them to full-timers. So the full-timers, would they be 37 and a half hours like the other coaches staff?
Well, actually, they would be 37 and a half hours, but that is not what the administrative staff works. The administrative staff works a 35-hour week. The library employees work a 37 and a half hour work week, and I, I think we want to do that with these employees because of the need to be able to cover the desk when people go for breaks and that, so I'm proposing their work week is 37 and a half hours.
So your idea is to eliminate that sort of equip, not equivalent, but comparable number of part-time positions?
Oh, absolutely. Those number of hours that we're using these full-time employees for.
And then, do you have any idea what the benefit cost might end up being? I mean, they'd get medical and.
Well, we're eliminating one position that had benefits, the tennis center manager. You know, hospitalization's the biggest thing, it's about, if it's family coverage, it's about $12,000. But beyond that, you know, what you look at with a full-time employee is probably benefits in the range of 35% because these pays are so low. And I think that's what's going to be the attraction to someone who needs hospitalization. I think we're going to be able to find some to fill these positions.
I had one other question about the attendant position. I had suggested that you add a phrase in the job description, presuming that they're going to work weekends and off-shits, to follow up on the, if people are having problems with the facilities, like the pavilion has an issue, or there's problems in one of the restrooms, that they be responsible for that? And Ryan showed me that you were going to add that.
Yes, we're going to, we've added that to the job description.
For the rest of the council, I just wanted to let them know I asked for a modification. I'll make a motion that council adopt resolution 0601. I'll make a motion that council adopt Resolution 060121, amending the Peterstownship Personnel Manual by modifying the job description for Recreation Facility Supervisor as well as creating a new job description for Facility Attendant.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Amending the 2021 Peterstownship Pay Plan governing the compensation for full-time and part-time administrative employees.
So, we created this new position of attendant, there is not a pay grade in our current plan that is suitable, and so what we're suggesting is to create a, another pay grade, a pay grade 11, which would put the salary range for this position between 25.2 and 37.8 with a midpoint of 31.5, so... And what that works out to be is somewhere between 12.92 per hour and 19.38 per hour, but I would assume that we would be hiring towards the lower end of this, so...
I'll move that we adopt Ordinance 866, amending the 2021 Peterstownship Pay Plan to add the position of attendant.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Payroll and bills?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the payroll and bills. You'll note there are two payrolls for approval due to the three-week interval. One of them is $294,000, the other is $343,000, the difference being, the higher difference being due to the resignation of a public works employee. He took the special incentive plan along with payout of time move for the people who we were just advised resigned. Council payable was $552,000 with operational expenses and capital expenses to Liveroni and Rizzo for Flowing Hills and Peters Lake's throwaway. I move we approve these as submitted.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, great comments, there's nine minutes. Does anybody want to review any of the minutes at the board meetings? Miscellaneous?
I want to bring council up to date with regard to the property at the end of Maplewood. I've had a chance to discuss ownership of this with the new owners. This kind of outlines what that parcel is. They believe, based upon the deed and the description, and the deed, they believe they purchased a half acre lot, if you actually plot that out, and the description is not what one would hope it would be, but it actually turns out to be that parcel of land, and as you can see, it runs to the middle of the street, and so it's a very, very small portion of land that they've actually purchased. They have, they purchased that for $600. I have provided them this information, they're going to go back and look, to have some look at it, determine what it is they actually bought, so...
Well, I'm looking at that, I don't see a number on that parcel. Is that part of, can you zoom out a little bit? Because I see the lot below it, I'm guessing is, well, I can't see. And there's number three, number four, number five, does that have a number to it?
No, that, that lot doesn't have a number.
Or is that part of lot number one?
No.
Lot number two?
No.
My eyes are starting to get out. Because I see a number two right there.
There's a one on the bottom.
The bottom of that's, right above, right above the bottom of the circle, looks like there's a number two.
Yeah, there's a one, and that one up, and that circle is a two.
Right.
There is no number on this parcel.
Right, that's, so that parcel is a part of lot number two, or would have been at some point, I'm guessing, maybe a part of lot number two. Because if they're going to come in and argue that that's somehow a buildable lot, and they have the right to build a house on it like they're parking over here in Frank's neighborhood, you know, that, that's going to be a whole separate issue, because I don't see how they can make that argument.
Well, on that parcel of land, it's, there is not even a possibility that you could put a structure.
Is that the corner there where we always could put the trees?
Yes.
Somebody cut them back. I know that sold a tax sale a while ago, like years ago, because I...
But it sold again.
It sold again, because I'm sure they didn't pay a lot for it, and it, I don't think that, I mean, you'd have to move a lot of dirt to make that buildable.
Well, again, there's not enough land there to build anything. I do...
Well, I mean, the only argument would be if it were a lot in the subdivision plan, they could, they could argue that they could, they'd have to get a variance, obviously, just like this other lot we discussed a few weeks ago.
Take a note of time.
Right, they could put one of those, yeah, exactly.
I think that's what you could build, so... The other thing I wanted to let council know, we moved ahead and have tied fireworks into an upcoming concert. That's on June 30th, so...
Make sure you note that there are fireworks.
And that's all I have.
Could I ask a question about the boards? Not specific to EQB, but they reference in the body of their minutes, the mission of EQB, and in the past, Park and Rec has talked about bylaws. We don't have a set standard that every board has to have a written mission and a set of bylaws, do we?
Well, the, there is a mission statement for the EQB board, and it exists in the ordinance that created them. I mean, and so, I mean, that's, I'm assuming that's what this is?
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah, there, there's a list of their functions and the role they're designed to...
But, but the rest of them don't really have a call as a mission, is...
No, no.
And then, do all the boards have bylaws?
No.
And is there a reason why some do and some don't?
I don't believe there is.
So, it's just based on who the board members are?
I think also, I think some of the boards, you know, like you take the Environmental Quality Board and the Cable Television, Television Board, those meetings are, are not as structured as what you would see at the Tony Haring Board or a Planning Commission, so I'm not sure that it would make a lot of sense to go through the effort of, of having bylaws to govern how the meeting's conducted and so...
Well, I wasn't arguing, I was just, it's a difference.
Yeah.
And just as if we acknowledge it and accept it and make sure that the ones you should have bylaws do, then it's fine. Thank you.
I have a couple comments. Excuse me, one thing, and this again is me speaking, but I'm hoping some of my council members will agree with me, that I want to compliment the school district, our graduating seniors, administration staff, and teachers. I think they've done a phenomenal accomplishment this year in transformation of the different buildings, the shifting of students, and the maintaining of a relatively steady classroom presence. I think it's just incredible as to what they've done as an accomplishment. I then would like to thank Ryan and Paul and the staff that put together the financial study. It's included in the Peterstownship magazine this month.
Absolutely.
I'd encourage all our residents to read it, the candidates, and at least on my standpoint, the political action group that was standing, standing in front of some of the candidates that were out there. So, thank you very much, Paul and Ryan.
Well, actually, and I, that's largely a function of Ryan's effort, but I, the person that I would also like to commend is Tom Grumman.
Yes.
Tom has a lot to do with the actual document that gets, so between the two of them, I would agree with you, I, you know, that one of the things that I'm proud about Peterstownship is that if you actually take the time to look at our budget, to look at our comprehensive annual financial report, which you'll be getting at the next meeting, and to look at our budget, you can have a very clear and concise view of how the township operates, you know, and, and I think it's a good message that we have to deliver, it's, so...
So do I. Thank you.
Well, I don't agree, Paul. I think the other thing that we should be commended on in that section, it also enumerated all the different places you could find information, and ways you could be connected, and ways you could become engaged, from PT for Me, the cable channel, the website. It was very comprehensive, and...
There is no municipality that's more transparent than Peterstownship.
Well, that's what I would think, too. It's just a question of people actually looking.
Yes.
So, I would concur with Mr. Lewis, it was very nicely done.
I agree as well.
Okay, anything else? Miscellaneous? Next agenda, whatever.
Along the trail, there's, there's some trees that are starting to get pretty low, especially from where I walk, from my house down to where it diverts, and some are croaching onto the trail. So, I saw some bikes today, bike riders hitting their, their heads, so it needs some tree trimming.
Vegetation period, it's just...
Oh, it's, it's so lush out there right now.
Off the shelf right now. You're going to be right down.
To the B-list, the B issuing the pardon.
Anything else, council, next agenda?
For next agenda, a while back, we talked about the minimum maintenance roads and the private roads, and we talked about having something written in resolution that really defines how we're going to expect residents to participate or not, and you indicated you were going to put together something at some point?
Well, this would be timely, because the engineer has finished up the design for, I think it's finished, right?
No, it's draft right now.
Draft, okay, so it, for Laurel Drive, so we could, yeah, so we can talk about that as part of it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, yes, I forgot. I want to thank somebody for the palm trees. I don't know where, where that idea came from, but it certainly was a surprise and rod by. Indian hills.
Indian hills.
At the entrance of Indian Hills, we have palm trees now.
Okay, we have a, an executive session.
Yes, we do.
Executive and legal matters, other than that, we are...